My one time, I don't know if this is tomorrow.
What do you vote on?
So damn.
Roll your eyes, I'm not sure what it's been. Not my fault.
(laughing) I was just thinking of the last year, I'm trying to keep going. I think my battery is dead.
Lucky for get them.
Found my name tag. It was buried in some stuff and I found it. Then I saw my daughter was busy. She was very happy. She loves going through stuff. I don't know if she would love going through Mama's stuff. The grandkids were really interested. There you go. An off of internet society.
Oh, yes.
Yeah. Like I, you know, I had some, I had the L T E on my phone. Communicate.
Get any of your.
Yeah.
Stuff?
Yeah. So I'm kind of clueless.
I did, I did get a phone call or something like that.
I'll tell you about during the.
All right, good evening, everybody. Let's call this meeting to order. Nice meeting for May eighth, two thousand twenty-three. City Council regular meeting. Welcome everyone. For the record, everyone in council is present. Staff is present with the exception of Police Chief Lehman, who is excused. Do we have somebody here this evening to do the invocation? Do please approach best, please. I'd like to ask everybody to please stand and remain standing afterwards to plead release.
I just want to commend our mayor, our city manager.
Are you?
As we can manage, let us go ahead and bow our heads and. City father pray that we've got our councilmen, our mayor, manager and everybody present as they discuss the business in relation to our city father. That they shall choose to do that which is moral and rational. I pray that their motivation, everything they want to do is for the good of the public and not their own father. I pray that they will be able to serve our community and solve our city's problems. They make good policies and address them and help them to be competent in excellence in their governance.
Evening.
Thank you. I tell you, the citizens of the United States of America, the judiciary of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be seated. Diet of Business Public Comments. If you came here for the invocation, would you also like to make a public comment or? That's okay, all right. So no public comments this evening. Second item, consent agenda. Payable vouchers. Approved payable voucher number one one nine two seven nine through one one nine two eight four and wire transfers as listed for five hundred and five thousand, five seventy-nine and sixty cents for the period ending April twenty-five, two thousand twenty-three. Plane vouchers. Approved plane voucher number one zero six three zero five through one zero six three five three and wire transfers as listed for one hundred and forty-seven thousand, four hundred and ninety-two dollars and forty-eight cents for the period ending on April twenty-six, twenty-three. Is any council member needing to remove one of these items from the consent agenda? What is the desire council on this item?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Right, motion by Councilor Beeler, second by Councilor Ripley to approve the consent agenda as presented. Debate on this item. Right, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
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 Close, no? To vote aye, motion carries. Active agenda. Easters Local Union Seven Six Zero Police Support Staff Collective Bargaining Agreement. Consider approving a resolution to ratify the C V A between the city of Sunnyside and Police Support Group Represented by Easters Local Seven Six Zero for January one, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Now, City Manager.
So this is an item that is just mostly housekeeping. This is the final agreement with the police support. And I wanted to give a shout out before I turned over to Ms. Horner. Um, our bargaining team was a great team. And this team came about very easily. It was not, there wasn't part. We came to the table with things that we wanted to share with them that were fair. And I think this is, is a good agreement for our staff and, and does, you know, not put us in a hole to a point where now we're not able to. And I just wanted to say that before we turn over to James and for our technical aspect.
Thank you, Madam, sitting in the chair. Um, we did come to an agreement on this contract with a three percent cost of living increase for two thousand twenty-three in addition to some parity adjustments. Those adjustments mainly affected our dispatch and corrections positions. And both of these positions are ones that we've had a hard time recruiting for. And the salaries did need to come up, especially for dispatch. A little significantly. Having said, we did go into this knowing that we were going to have to make some of those adjustments. So we did a pretty good job of doing things, but we do need to request an amendment for an additional one hundred and eighty thousand, nine hundred dollars.
Questions for Ms. Horner?
Roughly how many employees are covered under?
There are twenty, including on the contract.
Only hundred?
We tried, but, but eight, sixteen of those are the dispatch and the corrections employees. And so those are the ones that were, we really had to do some work on, on those.
I read it at home this morning. Wow, it did. Our job easy too.
Good questions? I would like to echo what Mr. Beeler said. You guys did an excellent job on that. And it does make our job as council much easier to have competent staff out there doing all the hard stuff. And we just wanted to acknowledge the fact that you guys did a lot of hard work in preparation so that the negotiations can go well. So thank you very much for your work. Are there any other comments? Hearing none, what is the desire council on this item?
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Second.
Um, Mrs. Hart, Mr. Hicks.
Mr. Hicks beat me out.
All right, motion by Councilor Beeler, second by Councilor Hicks to approve the resolution to ratify the C V A between the city of Sunnyside and the Police Support Group Represented by Easters Local Seven Six Zero for January one, two thousand twenty-three through December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-five. Is there debate on this item? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Close, no? To vote aye, motion carries. Again, thank you for all the hard work. All right, that was our active agenda. So Mayor's appointment for boards and commissions. Uh, I don't have anything in front of me unless I miss. I can say no, so I didn't miss anything. Okay, there's one.
And what in the planning?
So we've got agency and planning and community and economic. If notice somebody who's longing for those gaps, please encourage them to get on the city website and make that application. Council request status report. Now, City Manager.
Well, I'm going to say, I, I know for, for certain, there is no updates on any of your items, so.
Council members, any items that you would like to add to the council request status report? All right, if there is anything, please either speak to me or City Manager. Other reports, announcements and or questions by council, and I'm going to, as usual, start at the far end of the diets. Mr. Beeler.
While I attended the bailing of the float. I don't know what, how they do it every year, they completely. Up on it, I think everybody's.
Right, thank you, sir. All right, Mr. Hicks. Hey, Ms. Ripley.
I have nothing at this time.
You're sorry?
Of course I do. I have a couple of things. Um, one of the things I did want to say is I noticed on Facebook there was a press release about a shooting, I believe. And that's first one, I think that we put it on Facebook when we had a press release of that kind of nature.
We talked, you and I talked.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, my voice is not carrying very well to mine anyway. I just wanted to say that I appreciated that there was a press release about a shooting that happened, I think, Sunday. Sunday wasn't actually downtown.
It wasn't a shooting, no, it was.
A weapons charge.
A weapons charge, well, that's, that's good anyway, but I'm just really glad that we had that press release. You know, keep people aware of what our police officers are doing. And since we've had some significant disruption around Cinco de Mayo at different times, like not the one of the last year, but. Um, I just wanted to say the use of this, uh, the, uh, uh, public office, information officer, um, really is paying off. And I, I really appreciated that extra, extra step to put that on the Facebook. So that was, that was one thing that was really good. Um, there was one other thing that I, I thought was really good. Because I was in between moving, I, I got to see different pieces of Cinco de Mayo. And from what I could tell, it was very well attended. I couldn't hear the music and I'm just a couple of blocks away from downtown now. Look like about that. Um, but I couldn't hear the music, I could barely hear the crowd. And I know they were there because I saw the bodies. So I don't know what happened, there was a muffler or something around it, but it was, it was well attended and I think that people enjoyed it. It was good weather, it rained in the morning and then the night and then nice during the day, so it's jam a lot for, a lot of it. Um, I did want to say though that I think that one of the things that we need to be really careful of is, um, how we, how we, um, go through the process of, um, choosing who gets to be, um, in charge of these organizations. I know that, as it turned out, they, the, the organization that they take over, um, for the Cinco de Mayo this year did a really good job. They had a nice, uh, well laid out plan to follow, roadmap to follow. So I think that really helped them a lot. Um, so, but I just want to caution us that, you know, we still got to go through the LTAC and, uh, process too. But those are the things I had, I wanted to say that, that the parade was really cool. The cars were awesome. I picked out three that I want, but I can't afford them now. Or before. But thank you, thank you, that's all I have.
All right, Mr. Farmer.
Yeah, um, I caught on the news a couple of weeks ago or a week ago regarding Governor Enzley's, uh, asking for the executives. I want to take that good session though. Uh, another session in the legislature, they wanted to talk about drugs. Evidently, the, the law that we have is sunsetting or dropping off. Uh, there are several cities that have already stepped up and passed their own ordinance. Uh, the city of Yakima is looking at it, Yakima County is looking at it. Is this something that we should be looking at to protect, uh, our, our citizens from drug use and drug possession, drug selling? Can you hear me?
I'm sorry. When, when a sunsetting is a provision that revoked or dropped down certain felony. Based on, which is not being reenacted. We're dealing with there specifically a felony matters, um, the city. So it'd be more appropriate for the county. You make memorandums or resolutions for that situation. Have no effect on what the county.
Thank you. Okay, Deputy Mayor, it's you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I only have, I, I'm actually going to piggyback on what Mr. Farmer said, and I did not hear what the attorney said, so I apologize. But I did attend the A W C's, um, uh, webinar in regards to the Blake decision and what cities are doing. Mr. Farmer, you are correct in the sense that there are a lot of cities that are, are trying to, are looking at ordinances right now. But I honestly believe the legislature is going to come up with a fix here. Um, and I know the governor is, is going to call the session, so, um, I would say that we wait just a little bit longer. I understand your concern, sir, but as Public Safety Committee member, I think we could probably start talking about that in a Public Safety Committee meeting if you want. Before we bring it to council.
Deputy Mayor, can you hear me? Can you, can you hear me? Um, what Mr. Attorney said is that our court does not handle felonies and so it's not appropriate for Yakima County to make that change. Um, because we wouldn't handle those felony issues anyway.
Okay, well, and, and I attended the meeting with Yakima County, um, and County Prosecutor Brusick, uh, took Commissioner McKinney to task on her ordinance that she brought forward, um, to do this. Uh, he had concerns with the definitions. He said that it was probably unconstitutional. Um, and so if we are going to do something, we need to make sure that we're working with our attorneys, um, before we try and bring something before the council. So, then I have one other item, Mr. Mayor. The Y V cog general membership meeting, uh, will be held in Seela, um, on Wednesday, December, or, uh, May seventeenth. And I'm getting you the information right now. Apologize. I'm, I'm hoping that Ms. Hart and, and Mayor, you did get, you did receive something from Jody at Y V cog. Uh, Wednesday, May seventeenth, registration and social time began at six P M. Uh, we're at the Seela Civic Center in Seela, Washington. Um, and dinner is thirty dollars each or cash or checks only, please. And the deadline for R S V P is to this Friday, May twelfth. I will be returning from Olympia, um, the State Transportation Commission meeting, and so I will be attending. I'll be in Seela that evening. That's all I have.
Okay, so I did, I too received a call from a concerned citizen about the, uh, the state law, um, sundowning and the failure of the legislation to pass an extension or making changes to that. Um, I also saw that the governor has called for special session to, uh, address that issue. And as our attorney said, the city of Sunnyside doesn't deal with felony charges, so this is something that the county has to do. However, our city council can encourage our commissioners in a particular direction. Um, we can make our will known to them. So if it is council desire that, uh, we send that to Public Safety to come up with a resolution or make some sort of a statement in that regard and move forward with that, I'm certainly open to that sort of suggestion. I do think that, um, that would be a good idea because how are, are, are commissioners going to know what we would like to see if we don't tell them? So I'm seeing other heads nodding, nobody shaking their head very likely, no. So, uh, we can, as a council, address our commissioners. So I don't think that would be out of line. And I would encourage our Public Safety Committee to get together and start putting something together, draft some input from our attorney. And then we can all put our names to that as council members. Also, I had the privilege of attending events at Cinco de Mayo and the Northwest Nitro Hill Climb this weekend. And I want to commend our city personnel, our first responders, our fire department, U E M Ts, police officers in the work that they did up at the hill climb. They were very present and there were a couple of post calls that on Saturday they weren't needed, fortunately. But, uh, it was good to see them there and they were there at the ready the whole time. And our acting chief was there for a while as well, so they were taking the role seriously there. And I had the opportunity to speak with our police officers at the command center throughout the day, uh, early morning on Saturday. And then throughout the day on Sunday, I saw them around it felt like for a little while. I couldn't walk five feet without seeing a block of uniforms walking past, and that was very good. Um, whether I was downtown, whether I was, uh, at the Little Centennial Square, or whether I was up watching the horses, our safety and security forces were very present. So I want to congratulate you and thank all of you for the work that you did this weekend and staff. And it's all about your work and all of that was a phenomenal job. Um, I'm sure you're going to give more reports and information on that, but I do want to commend you on the work that you did. This is the first time that you guys have done this and it came up very well. So it was nice to see everybody out there smiling and relaxing and, and having a good time, which is exactly what, what we want to have happen. So that's all I've got. So next item of business. Upcoming council meetings. Now, City Manager.
We have an amendment to, um, S F C two dot O two scheduled season charges, franchise ordinance. And then we will be holding a public hearing regarding the property sale. And then we have the G D M S and property stuff.
Good. Right, council members, if there's anything that needs to be added to an agenda, please speak to the City Manager, to myself, as soon as possible, we can get those added to the agenda. I know the drug department has, now, City Manager.
So I'm going to go first today, which is what I usually don't do, but I would like to say first, I have some of the most fabulous staff ever in all departments in our city. We all came together in a group, um, did our individual jobs, which mine was the parade. And I was very glad to hear everyone was happy with it and it went off without a hitch. Um, but everything this weekend was easy and, and we worked together. Um, everybody kind of knew their, their task and their assignment and, um, the work crew just nailed it for us. If we needed something, you know, like, oh, the paper that the announcer's supposed to have was the registration desk. And of course, he's in Centennial Square. So someone brought on a, on a gator and ran, ran down and picked it up and took it back. So it's little things like that that really made a difference, I think. Um, since Rob's not here, I will also let you know that he has hours and hours of drones that he filmed the entire parade with the drone. So for next year, we will have those, um, images that we can use for advertising and, you know, different things. And I had so many nice comments about how polite our people were, how they, they felt secure, they felt good. Our downtown businesses made money too, and that's a blessing. And, um, really that's what it's about, is getting people aware and knowing what's going on in our downtown. So I would like to say I'm just impressed with my staff. Um, and there was a lot of things we learned about the event that I will be sharing with LTAC. And, and, uh, we do think, um, and we know that the city is always going to be a vital part of this event, um, just because of the logistics. There's surely no way for us to. With that, I'm going to go with Jackie and let her speak.
I T informed us that the new sound system will be installed next week, so maybe we'll have a whole new sound system. And then I've been reaching out to you guys about, uh, planning a counselor retreat and it's been a little difficult. So you'll still continue to get tech assistance from me tomorrow on. You'll, you'll be available. If any tech assistance, Mr. Redd, do you have anything?
Questions for Mr. Redd.
I have a couple of things. Um, just wanted to share some numbers with you from April, the biggest, like, basically the last month of April till today. Um, for code enforcement, so I'm Ted five apartment assists, twenty-five, uh, parking calls, twenty weed and grass, ten yard sale boxes, twenty-five citizen complaints, fifteen abandoned vehicles, thirteen graffiti, call follow-ups, violations issued. Twenty citizen assists and twenty-eight officer generated. And then, um, to this last legislative session, basically this last, yeah, the last legislative session in Olympia, there's been a lot of different housing bills that have kind of gone through and they're this place, that place, and they're all kind of merging right now. So I am, right now is the time of year that I typically would do our council amendments and probably have to plan and text amendments for our, um, for municipal code, run that to the planning commission. Um, because everything is just, it's close to getting through the governor's office, um, say about a month, which is, is as long as we get. Um, but it's going to be incorporating quite a few changes to the housing work. Uh, we'll have those conversations across the bridge that we. That we really don't do right now. It'll be, I'm expecting a lot of conversation, debate.
Yeah, a quick update, uh, we're in the process, our cool staff right now, uh, will be in the pool the twenty-seventh of this month. Uh, we have some. Um, anyway, and we'll be open for business then. A little later, because the kids get a school a little later this year, this way. So third half, the six street projects going well, a couple of weeks behind on their schedule. Um, part of that is heat of the railroad, I've kind of informed. Or if you go out there, those railroad tracks, there's one set to go through there. Uh, once we get that. Per sidewalks, driveway approaches. Uh, thing that looks bad out there, but it's, it's, they're.
Do we have a target date, we can start telling people, we won't keep it done by this date?
It was supposed to be like end of September, uh, we were trying to asphalt, you know, make. Window again. Went court. Uh, so there, there are a couple of weeks behind, we're kind of hoping to make some of that. A lot to do, so. Pressure's in, uh, stormwater, water, all of this is done. He'll start seeing some parts, he'll start looking and he'll, he'll.
Ms. Horner. Thank you, I actually don't have anything to report right now, but I wanted to thank Jackie for her live streaming so much of the Cinco de Mayo event because I was not able to attend. But I'm on that live stream and I felt like I was there, so I think that was awesome, you saw her Facebook and I really appreciate it. Ms. Horner.
Um, let's start off, I think we had a, another very successful death ceremony. Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor and the members of council that were in attendance. It was, it got very successful, very appreciated by, by all members of the staff. Um, for those who weren't in attendance, we, uh, had this morning approximately twelve, a dozen of our firefighters all, both career volunteer resident. It was, it was a, other great events. We appreciate those who, who timed it, put it on, those who were present for it. Um, also like to feedback on the many comments that were made regarding the Cinco de Mayo festival. Um, not being from the air originally, I had not been a part of one before. Um, I did make a point to come down to spend some time on Saturday and I was incredibly impressed. Um, I just know the next time, uh, next year, you need to come with more money. There's a lot to do. Um, so also I appreciate those who, uh, put in the effort for that. And, uh, as Mr. Mayor mentioned, uh, we were in attendance at the hill climb, we staffed all three days. And between the hill climb and the Cinco de Mayo festival, we did not have one, uh, call for service that required my staff. So the way we look at it is our board firefighters means, uh, better circumstances for our community. So we were glad to have any incidents related to it, so that will go well. Um, uh, since last, last council meeting, um, in the fire service, we don't use two or you don't use the F. Last council meeting, in the fire service, we don't use two or we don't use the S word, which is slow, we don't use the Q word, which is quiet, because those are jinx words, you say those and obviously you don't. But it has been the S word, it has the Q word last couple of weeks, so but 167 calls for service in this last council meeting, which are here today to 1,537. I'll have to report unless you have any questions.
Where are you with staffing right now, are you fully staffed right now?
Currently, as far as our current staff, we are at our full budgeted level staff, which is 18 line firefighters, that includes 15 firefighters and three career captains. One of which is currently acting as assistant chief currently, so up short on the ship, but with our volunteer staff and our resident staff, we're able to make sure that we're properly staffed each and every day. With the addition of the three crew members that we did middle of last month, we've seen a significant decrease. We actually paid out last payroll period, paid out seven hours of overtime, which is similarly low compared to what it is, what it's been in the past. So, our staffing levels are, you know, I never say I don't really need a little more firefighters, but we are at a appropriate level, we operate in that, at a much safer level and that provides better service to our community. Very appreciative of that.
And then what about paramedics, do we have enough paramedics or are we still looking for more of them?
Nobody has enough paramedics. Right now, I believe we have seven, soon to be eight on our staff. The reason why I say soon to be is one of our new hires that started last month is toward the end of his paramedic school, so assuming he continues to do well on the exams, he should be a full-fledged paramedic by this fall. So, there is certainly eight, which is approximately half of our staff, which is pretty good.
Do you want more of them? Of course, always do. Alright, thank you. Thank you, everyone. I have no more on my agenda, so there, yes, sir, Mr. Beeler?
I had forgotten to bring up something, we had an emergency partner and she opened us on stuff to read in order of a month, but I'm really impressed with it.
You know, and that, I've had it brought up to me once or twice from different sources that there might be some discrepancy in the books and I appreciate the two of you going through there, taking a look at it and being able to prove that everything is completely above board and we don't have an issue. The staff that we have in Sunnyside, as our manager mentioned right now, is I think some of the best, we've got the best team working right now that we've ever had in the 10 years I've been on council and I'm very impressed with what I've seen. So, any kind of accusation, that sort of stuff, it's good to investigate by people who want to take the time, have the time to go through that and be able to give a stamp of approval on that is, yeah, reassuring. So, thank you for the work you two put in on that one because that's, that just makes my head spin to look at numbers, I can, a lot of other stuff really well, but I'm looking at numbers. Alright, anything else that needs to come up? Alright, there being no further business, come before council and if there's no objection, this meeting is adjourned at 7:01.